This meeting of the Gazzan City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on the City Clerk, Jenny Shaver, for the roll call.
Acting City Clerk, we still have one, it's not me. Councilwoman Toles.
Here.
Councilman Eccles is absent today. Councilman Worthy.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Billingsley.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. Shane Ellison will bring our invocation this morning. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we're thankful for the beautiful day that you've given us, thankful for the opportunity to gather here in your presence and to do the business of this great city. I give thanks especially for the leadership, the mayor and the city council, and just ask that you bless them and give them the wisdom that they need to do the business that's in the best interest of this city. Just ask that you lead us and guide us as we go throughout our week and help us make decisions that are pleasing in your side. Just thank you for every breath that you give us and just thank you for the day. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on September 29th.
So moved.
Say it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 25th through August 1st.
So moved.
Say it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Proclamations, Mayor.
The Executive Director of Second Chance, Susan Shipman.
Susan Pooter-Billups.
Okay, that's okay. Y'all want to come up, Marie?
Yes.
Come on up here. Come on Marie, we'll go get you on TV. Whereas, let it be known that the City of Gazzan, Alabama acknowledges the prevalence of domestic violence in this city and in all of its districts. Domestic violence is a crime that will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law in the City of Gazzan. The city does assist victims of domestic violence by supporting Second Chance through promoting its shelter, outreach, court advocacy, transitional housing, educational and prevention programs. Second Chance is recognized for its work in providing safe shelter and supportive services for domestic violence victims fleeing abusive situations in the Gazzan area. The City of Gazzan resolves to reduce the incidence of domestic violence by promoting awareness of this issue and of availability of safe shelter and services provided by Second Chance. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sherman, and the mayor of the City of Gazzan declares today domestic violence awareness month and to be observed and promoted throughout the city by everyone.
On behalf of all the clients we serve and my colleagues, we thank you for this. We receive over 900 crisis calls a year from women and men who are victims of domestic violence. It's a very real problem in this community and in the whole country, the world. So, thank you for bringing awareness to it and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just add for a moment, Second Chance is housed with us at the Family Success Center and we are so thrilled to have them in this community. They're such a huge, huge, huge need and if any of us read the paper every day, we know what a critical issue domestic violence is and the worse economy is, the more we have child abuse and domestic violence. So, we know how important it is and we're just thrilled to have them here in this community and housed with us and we appreciate the mayor and the council's support. Thank you.
Unfinished business, item number 8A is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien against property located at 506 Webster Street in District 6, the state of Alabama, Terry Mayo and Albi Mayo being the last known owners. The amount is $2,556.40. This resolution was tabled on September 1st for 30 days. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I make a recommendation, we table this indefinitely, please, we've got with the owners and they're going to pay the $2556.40 to the city.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, to table the resolution indefinitely, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1164 Braid Avenue in District 3, Julian Ann Billingsley being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in June of 2014. There've been no improvements to the property, there was a building permit taken out in June of 2014. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1411 Forest Avenue in District 3, Subie Bragg and Frost Property LLC being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, you have someone, okay?
Yes, ma'am. If you would, go to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Right here, right there.
I am Subie Bragg. I bought this property for taxes in May of this year. I have a picture of this property. I did contact the previous owner, I guess, before the taxes, Mr. Frost. I don't imagine he is here. I went to his office and he said that he knew somebody from the city, he didn't make a call. I asked him to call me today, by 10 o'clock, he did not. So, I would like to keep the property. I think that it can be repaired, there's a part on the back of it that I wish to do away with, but this is a picture of the property. It's a brick house. I think at one time, somebody told me it might have been a barbecue grill, this is the side here. Someone had built on to the back of the property which has been, is actually just about done away with, but I plan to just take that part off if I'm allowed to do so. I paid $2,200 back taxes for the property. During, since that time, I have paid, let's see, about $600 in upkeep and expense of trying to, you know, keep it nice looking. However, I didn't get a building permit because I was waiting on Mr. Frost to do something and he has not. So, I think that I could repair the place and I would like to use it as a stained glass studio. My husband is, he has a hobby of stained glass and he's professional with it. And I have asked the zone, Lord, you know how it was zoned, and it's B1. And I think it would be a nice stained glass studio. So, I would like to keep it if Mr. Frost has no interest.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Bragg. Thank you, Mr. Bragg. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our case in August of 2014, there've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Mrs. Roberts, who would own the property here?
Well, she owns the property, of course, she has a tax interest on the property. Now, the Ross and Frost have this, we own it as a life of redemption.
And how long is that right of redemption? For years?
Two years.
Two years.
Now, I mean, she can go ahead, she can show ownership through a tax, she can go and get a building permit and make improvements on the property, but she still acquiesce that to prior ownership, probably later, because if they were paying, they would have to pay her back at times when she may get a prob, requesting improvements that she has to always be.
I have a question for her. Ma'am, if we decided to table this, to give you an extension, how many days do you need before you start something, start work on it?
I will start something in two weeks.
Okay.
Hey Tom, is that the Revus Carlisle Building?
It used to be.
Clifford Building, W Building.
Right there. On Forest.
Clifford Building first, it was used to.
Yeah.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I'm going to ask for, to table it for 30 days, to give her a chance. Now, you know, if you don't start work on it within 30 days and it come back before us, we're going to go ahead and abate it, okay? All right.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to table for 30 days and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
For item number 11, no council action will be necessary regarding a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1509 Malone Street in District 3 due to there being a new owner. Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2007 Broadway Street in District 5, the state of Alabama, L.D. Campbell and the L.D. Campbell Care of Dale Campbell being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a mobile home, we started the process in April of 2012, we dealt with a couple of different owners, there've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I take that's a rehab too, right?
What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 913 Willow Street in District 5, the state of Alabama, the state of Mattie Coleman, Ayers Melanie Coleman, Earl Winston Jerry Coleman Jr., Winston Jerry Coleman III and Jarissa Coleman being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves the old daycare on Willow Street, we started the process in March of this year, there've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I move to way abate the nuisance.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, that's in my district and the people in that district have been after me to get this done because it's an eyesore and wild animals are in it and it's just, it's just a problem. And nobody has taken any initiative to do anything about it as far as the relatives go. So, I suggest we go ahead and abate the nuisance.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1116 Central Avenue in District 6, Jimmy Lee Duke's being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Sir, if you would, just give us your name and address, please.
Jimmy Lee Duke's, 1116, where do I live? 1116, Alice, hell. 1620 Merton Street. I bought this house, I'm not quite sure, I think it was middle of last year, I think. But I've been in and out of the VA hospital for almost a year and I'm getting back on my feet now. And I need a little more time to get this together. I just had a welder to come over and put windows and security doors on that house because people have been going in there and they have taken the commode, the tub and sink out of it. But if I can get a little bit more time, as I leave here today, I can stop by downstairs and, well, I am downstairs, that's the thing, get a permit and I can start on this thing almost immediately.
Okay, all right.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duke. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition?
Can I ask you one question? How long would it take you to fix this house? Can you have this thing done 30, 40 days?
I don't think I can do that in about 30, 40 days, but I can do some on it every week, every month, some of the stuff I can, you know, do myself, but the major stuff like top tubs and all that, I'm not physically shaped to do that.
Yes, sir, yes. This case has been going on three years now, in that house.
I haven't had it three years.
The case started on 9th month, 19th day of 2012. So, when you actually bought the house, it was condemned then, correct?
It was condemned then, when I bought it.
Okay.
And I think I bought it a couple of last year, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in September of 2012, we dealt with two different owners, there've been no improvements to the property, the last permit taken out was October of 2012. Today, we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I usually don't do this and it usually comes back to bite me, but Mr. Reed has kind of talked me into this on this certain case here since you've come and pleaded with me today. Can you bring the hoe outside of this case up in 30 days?
Can you do significant improvement to the outside of the property?
And it'd be, now, if you don't do significant improvement in 30 days, it needs to be done, you know, we're going to come back and we're going to push it down. So, I mean, I don't want you to waste your money or our time, so that's why I'm asking you as a man to man if you're going to be able to do that or not, you know, we just need, I just need to know. Okay, I make a motion, we give them, I'm going to give them 30 days on this one, I haven't been able to look at this piece of property, I'm going to give them 30 days on this one. But if it don't come back, you know, if you spend your money on it and it's not, it don't come up to the building department standard on outside, they will come and push it down and you'll lose that money that you spent on it.
Second. Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1506 Central Avenue in District 6, Robert Stephen Jones being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Doing council members, I am Robert Stephen Jones. This was actually my house, the old lady left me, I had refrigerated, it was a complete set up house and I can understand what Mr. Duke's is talking about on Central Avenue because they have broke in and stole every single thing that I own and busted windows and everything. 2009, 2010, I'd remodeled the inside of the house, had new electrical, new plumbing, using the PEC stuff, new floors, new carpet, new linoleum, new bathroom, same tub, new paint on the inside, can't read my own writing, you have to forgive me, new hot water heater. Since the notice that I got from y'all, I've completed outside porch, or side deck actually is what it is, scraped the house, the window seals, I've replaced wood and almost finished all that and also placed some woods in the siding on my house, still needs just a little bit of caulking, already bought the paint, already got the paint gun now, brand new, got to finish the windows and the front door because they keep kicking in the front door and the windows. So, other than that, which I want to do that the very last thing, within 30 days, I'm hoping to have a renter in the place and be, make a big income out of it.
I ask you, where you been for the last four years too?
At my mother's, taking care of her and doing other rental properties I have.
Oh, you got, wait a minute, whoa here, you've got other rental properties, you said, besides this house?
Yes.
And you was kind of putting your other...
I was waiting on the lady to come back.
She ain't come back in four years.
She ain't come back in four years already, she's coming back.
All right, that answered my question, I appreciate that. That answers it there, Tommy.
That would make a beautiful country music song, I'm not kidding. Whoa, can anybody play a guitar up there? Ooh, service, tell me about it.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in November 2011, no visible improvements on the outside of the house, there've been no permits issued during this process, we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I feel for this gentleman here and since his wife's left him, she's been gone four years and he's got a bunch of other, what got me though, he said he had a bunch of other rental property. So, I'm going to give him seven days to bring this up, table for seven days and next Tuesday if it ain't, I hope she comes back before then, that's all I got to say. I asked for seven days on this one.
We have a motion for seven day table, a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 3311 Sooty Avenue in District 6, Thomas Warren Shook and Annie Ruston Wyatt and Jerry Murphy being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Please state your name and address, sir.
Thomas Warren Shook, 3311 Sooty Avenue.
Annie Ruston Wyatt, Shook, 3311 Sooty Avenue.
I'm Jerry Alprey, I own, I got mortgage on the place, sir.
We have been trying to get the house up to date, but every time we come back, they broke in, they busted windows, they took stuff out of the house, but we got part of the house done. What we wanted to do is take from the garage over to the next window and finish that part with the apartment and tear the rest of the house down and have it hauled off. And we're trying to get that started immediately and everything. We've done got part of the siding down, that's falling apart on the outside to put new up. We've had new wiring done through the electrician through the house, but we got to get him back out there now to take it down from the part that we're tearing off. And all, we're going to have a lot of it tore off, but we're going to keep from the first window back and redo that so that when I come down here, we come down here to visit my kids, it'll be fixed and ready and everything. So, we'll have a place to stay when we come down. But we put in new windows and every time we do, the kids come up through there busting them out. We put in new flooring, started a new bathroom, had to take the whole bathroom out because it had failed the road. And the part that we're tearing down is falling down anyway, so we're taking from that room back and fixing it and starting it immediately.
Mostly what you want to keep is a cement floor in it where the garage is, that's what you want to keep.
An apartment's got a cement floor.
It's got a one bedroom apartment.
Going to tear about four rooms off of it, one back there.
Five rooms. Five rooms, six rooms. Six rooms off.
How many-room house is it?
It's a one, two, three-bedroom, uh, dining room, living room, and a kitchen, which is all gonna be tore off.
And then, then we got a, it was supposed to have been a den, a garage, and then a one-bedroom apartment and kitchen and living room.
We're gonna keep all that and tear the rest down. We get it tore down in thirty days, I, with our money situation, it's where it is right now, it's gonna take me a little bit more time than that to get it tore down and hauled off.
But we got some people that are willing to help get it done and everything. And we would appreciate if y'all take that in consideration and let us at least keep the apartment and the garage and that room that we got done. And we'll get the rest of it tore down and hauled off.
And we're gonna hang it outside done.
Yeah. We put a lot of money into this house, and, uh, we're both on fixed incomes, and it's taking everything we got. I've got a case tomorrow, I'm hoping it gets settled, and then we can have it done. And also, I was, I was really waiting on my burn case to get settled to put my money into the house. And I go to court tomorrow on it. So I'd appreciate if y'all just think about it and let us keep it and...
How much money are you gonna put into this house?
Um, well...
We had talked a couple weeks ago on the phone, you told me forty-five-hundred dollars was what you was actually gonna spend on it?
That's what we had done spend on it. And we was gonna do whatever it took to fix it, but then we got to thinking, we don't need that big of a house. All we need is that little apartment just for us and a kitchen and a living room and a garage. And I told him, I said, the best thing to do is tear the rest of it down and everything and just build what we need instead of trying to fix it up for all the grandkids. They can sleep in the living room. They're only two and five, so they like wearing most couch anyway.
Yeah, I've looked at this, I actually looked at this piece of property, and it's, it's in pretty bad shape.
Yeah.
It really is, and I wouldn't...
I would, but I would like to do that so I could have a place to come and stay and visit with my grandkids.
Okay, we got you there.
That's what we're planning. It's gonna take more than thirty days to get everything started and get the outside done on that part. We already got, uh, done. There's some improvement. I've been mowing and stuff, cleaning it up yesterday. I gotta do, finish mowing today.
Okay.
Well, we'd appreciate it if you let us just keep that much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in July of two thousand and thirteen. There have been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out two years ago this month. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
Uh, we have been working on the inside. We haven't had time to start on the out. History, the outside hasn't gone any good, but we have started tearing down any of the parts that we've been doing, and we are.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate. Checking.
Okay, is there any discussion? Before we vote on this, I'd just like, like to make one comment. For, for Mr. Dukes, Mrs. Wyatt, um, and, uh, Ms. Bragg, who all came up, you know, folks, we realize that, uh, you know, it, it takes a lot. And it ta, and it really takes a, a strong person to come up when you fall in a hard times. We understand that, that many of you probably, if your, if, if your circumstances had been differently, might have managed your property differently, so we definitely understand that. So what we want to encourage you to do is be sure to stay in touch with the building department and, uh, continue to make progress, because our goal is not to tear a house down. All right, we're not, we're not really interested in tearing it down, but we have a city code to, to uphold and, and, uh, and so, so with that being said, when they get to the point of being below, uh, or, or under the standard or under the code, we, we have to address it. So, so again, we appreciate you coming forward, uh, and, and making your points with this council. Uh, we ask that you continue to make process, progress, so we won't have to tear those homes down. Uh, and again, that's for everyone, uh, that has, has come before us today.
Can I, I say something, since this is in District Six. Uh, the first few people that came, I hadn't talked with them, uh, but, and I really hadn't looked at those two pieces of property. But it'd been three years and four years, a gentleman fifteen oh six, I gave him seven days to get that piece of property up. I feel like if, you know, his circumstance and seven days, he said he'd been working, and seven days, if the building inspector doesn't see that the building, the house is right, we'll just push that one down. The next person, the next gentleman, said that he had bought that house, and it was condemned when he bought it, and actually, he should have been working on that right then, but I'm gonna give him the benefit of the doubt since he, you know, he came forward. Uh, the last people we talked to on, on Sudie, I talked with them on the phone, and I went and looked at that piece of property, and it's gonna take a lot of work on that piece of property to get it down, and it's gonna be a lot of money have to be spent. And that's why I wanted to abate that nuisance, but you can get with Mr. Harbison, you know, we're not gonna push it down tomorrow. And, you know, if you might could get that up before we came, you could talk with him. But, you know, it's an old piece of property, like I've said a hundred times up here. We've had people in District Six that's got in these houses, we've had three deaths that I know of in an abandoned house, two overdoses, and somebody murdered somebody in another house we had, was sleeping in it. We've had houses, winter times coming, an old abandoned house over there, people's homeless peoples got in it, tried to build a fire to stay warm during the wintertime. They've set the houses on fire with no fire, no water, no gas, none of that stuff. You know, we just gotta take care of the citizens that surround the piece of property. If you care enough about this piece of property that y'all three people own, if y'all care enough about it, y'all would do something about this. I'm just telling you from my standpoint and the people in District Six. We have meetings twice a month, and these houses come up all the time about their being vacant, they're bringing people's property values down. An old abandoned house brings people's property values down. It's just sitting there, it's a nice sort of community, and I hate to keep preaching and preaching and preaching, but this city has got to get these houses cleaned up, the owners have got to start abiding by the rules to do their houses. And if you've got, this other gentleman said he had a bunch of rental houses, well, Mark Lappes let this one go on Central Avenue, I think he would agree with me. He's let this one go on Central Avenue to fix some more rental houses he has. So I'm telling y'all, just please do what you have to do. I'm off my soapbox. Oh, did you? Okay.
Maybe quit smoking, too.
Yeah, some more pictures up here.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number seventeen through nineteen are public hearings. They're resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and we have three locations. I want to read the addresses and names, and anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. Uh, all three of these are actually in District Two. One oh six Sixth Avenue East, three thousand one hundred five dollars and ninety-two cents, five hundred Elmwood Avenue, three thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty, eighty-eight cents, and nine twelve Maryland Avenue, two thousand four hundred eighty dollars and ninety-two cents. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt all three resolutions.
Show move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number twenty is a resolution authorizing agreement with JBWNT, Inc. This is for engineering design of two hundred and fifty handicap ramps that need modifications to be compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and the amount is not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number twenty-one is a resolution authorizing preliminary engineering agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation. This is a preliminary engineering agreement with Aldott for reconstruction of South Eleven Street from Black Creek Parkway to the bridge at Black Creek. The total estimated cost is eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars, with the city being responsible for twenty percent of it, which is sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number twenty-two is a first reading. It's an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter Ten of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Gaston. This adds managed care of feral cats and removes the seven-day holding period before destruction of dogs and cats not appearing to be owned. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. New business, do we have any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. This is a request from the Community Development, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the resolution as new business today, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, permission is granted.
I move for adoption.
Checking.
Okay, is there any discussion?
This is a, a grant that deals with the, uh, summer enrichment program, and I believe it's for the children that, um, Ms. Gerdi Lo have a program, and so it's for this, an amount of three thousand and five hundred dollars that's given to her program for the summer.
Also like to say, I believe about a month ago or so, uh, she received a real nice award based on this enrichment program.
She was crowned queen.
National Baptist, uh...
It was a worthy situation. Thomas-type, but it was a worthy situation.
Not, not every day you get crowned queen.
I never had it.
Thank God for that, man.
It's still happening.
All right.
Not much.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is there any more new business?
Yeah, I have two, Mr. President. Request from the Police Department, uh, ordinance amending fiscal year twenty sixteen general fund budget to allow for a JAG grant in an amount of forty thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars. Ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those to, in favor to consider the items as new business today, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, permission is granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, this is for the, uh, bulletproof vest grant.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to approve both ordinances today, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, the ordinances have been adopted.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. It's, uh, Resolution four eighty-eight. It's approving issuance of a special event alcoholic beverage license. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the resolution as new business today, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, permission is granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
None needed, thank you.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards, citizens' requests, we do have one on the agenda. Mr. Porch, if you would, come up.
Good morning. I have two items on the agenda. I'd like to first, um, just to offer a public thank you, which I know in my twenty-three years in Illinois politics, very seldom that the elected official get a public thank you. Uh, yesterday was the end of my fourth year of Musical Mondays at the Water Wall. I want to take this time just to thank the mayor, the council, and family savings for the funds that was, uh, given so that, uh, food could be served. Chef Curly here did all the cooking, so, and I, I believe, I didn't make an official count, but each day from June through yesterday, there was at least thirty, forty that was served each and every Monday. I think the people look forward to it. I know I did, and so did my neighbors, because it, also, I want to appeal to the Police Department now that from now until June, when the next Musical Monday starts, if you're hearing the noise on Maryland Avenue, it's just me and my music getting down.
Get there.
But I just want to thank you. It has been great, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. The second thing on the agenda is Sickle Cell. This coming Saturday is the Edgewall County Gaston Sickle Cell Foundation Walk, and we've been told that a, uh, a cure has been found in mice. Now, it's a matter of the human trials. Just think, we here in Gaston with the march of Sickle Cell, in our lifetime, it's highly possible that a cure will be found for Sickle Cell, and we was part of this cure that was found. So this coming Saturday, um, from nine till noon at the Alpha Theater. Registration is still going underway, that T-shirt, I think I offered T-shirt to the one who's given. So this coming Saturday, October the tenth, it is a Edgewall County Gaston wide walk. Uh, I think up to three miles, so if you don't have to walk three miles. So, uh, I get a chance to play my music again in public. So I enjoy it. Just hope you enjoy it, come out and enjoy the walk. You don't have to walk if you don't want to, but this is a city-wide thing, it's just not for me and my music, but it is for cure for Sickle Cell, and it will be found. I thank you so very much. Remember, you just received a public thank you. It might be the only one you get this year, but I'm offering it to you now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Porch. I always encourage, uh, to, uh, to, to acknowledge, uh, both Buster Porch and Curly Duramus and other guys who, uh, make a contribution. They retire and then they go back to work, so we really appreciate, uh, all they do and all their efforts. Uh, and do want to remind everyone to go out and support this event. Uh, sickle cell disease is a very serious issue, and, uh, this is definitely an event that needs our support. Uh, remarks from the mayor and the council. Uh, mayor is not... Councilwoman Toz?
I'd just like to, uh, make your awareness that October is Breast Cancer Month, and so if, uh, you have pink wear, uh, if not, you can do like councilman wear, then get a tie with a little pink on it somewhere to support it, but support Bre- Breast Cancer Month.
Councilman Billis?
Uh, yes, I have a couple announcements. Uh, I'd like to announce that my community meeting will be Monday, uh, October the twelfth, from five to six at Banks Park. Uh, if you're in that area, to come out and ask your questions or whatever. We will have someone there to speak on it. And I also would like to, uh, commend the city for the, uh, homecoming parade for the Gaston... Gaston City High School, there were a ton of people downtown, it was a festive occasion, and that powerful band that Gaston City has performed tremendously, so our young people are doing a lot of good things at our city high school. And also, we had a, a jazz in the park Sunday night, and somehow I got, uh, told that it wasn't gonna, we wasn't gonna have it because of the rain, but if, if things, if it rains, we're gonna always go inside Convention Hall, and that's what we did, we had a, 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 not very many people showed up, but the musicians showed up and they did a excellent job, so I want to commend the city and all of its sponsors for that event. So there are a lot of good things, good things to go to in the City of Gaston, we just have to get up and go and, and enjoy them, so, and also, I enjoyed Buster's, uh, uh, music at the wall, and he, he doesn't play enough West Montgomery, but we'll, we'll let him play with that. Thank you.
Alright, Councilman Cannon?
I just wanted to remind everybody, October twenty ninth, from five to seven on Wall Street in Alabama City, will be about the thirty-seventh, the thirty-eighth annual trick or treat for the kids, come on out, bring your kids, it'll be a safe time for them to come out and trick or treat on Wall Street.
Okay. Councilman Reed?
Yeah, I'd just, again, want to thank Buster and Curly, uh, what they do with music and food, just calms everybody, it's a good mixture, everybody has fun, it's just amazing what, what y'all have done, and I do appreciate it.
That's all. Alright. There's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Show move.
Second.